Everybody go airplane.
TV's on.
She has many.
Start the turn on.
Yeah, it's the instructions. I'm not reading those.
Did we? Oh, we're on. We're on now. We're on.
On TV.
That's on. Okay. The TVs are on.
Then we'll get on the monitors anyway. That one's up there.
That's because I haven't turned the monitor on here.
Oh, okay. You just.
We don't have the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Petches, if you'll call the roll call, please.
Mr. Eggleston?
Here.
Mr. Blackwell?
Here.
Mr. Tally?
Here.
Mr. Chair Brown?
Here.
Mr. Crandall?
Here.
Mr. Wu?
Yeah.
Mr. Stetson?
Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of September 7th. There are no special orders of business. We do have the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of August 3rd, 2016. If there are no discussion items, I'll entertain a motion for approval unless someone has something to comment.
I will. Go ahead.
I have one question about the minutes. I believe it was out here. That Mr. Little, I didn't see it reflected in the minutes that Mr. Little discussed that that reservoir was slated for expansion.
I thought I saw it in the minutes here.
I thought there was some suggestion that it has not reached its maximum potential, but I did not see where there was discussion that it was slated.
In the middle of the second paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
It may just not read. The trees do not meet existing criteria or move at this time, but there are plans to increase the size.
I withdraw my comment.
Okay. I move we approve the minutes of the adjourned regular meeting of the city of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, August 3rd, 2016, minutes. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Smith and move motion by Mr. Crandall. All in favor?
Aye.
It passes seven zero.
Oh, you abstain for?
He was not here.
He's not here for being minute. Okay. For oral and written communication, members of the audience may address the Commission on Matters of Public Interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentations. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Seeing no one, we'll move on to item seven, the consent calendar, which is, there is none. Public hearings, time limitation for the city applicant is 10 minutes and all of the speakers, three minutes. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant, not to exceed 10 minutes, public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation for three minutes. While in closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing and discuss your actions and act upon the matter. Item 8A, conditional use permit, 16-189, staff waiver of minor architectural permit, 16-300, Stance Headquarters Building, number two. Mr. Otamian.
Due to notification error, staff's recommending this item be continued to the scheduled October 5th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to continue to the 5th of October. So moved.
Second.
Second movement by Mr. Crandall, second by Eggleston. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposed? Passes seven zero. Item 8B, conditional use permit, 16-127, CrossFit OC. Once again, Mr. Otamian.
Again, this item was because of a notification error is being recommended to be continued to the October 5th, 2016 meeting.
Okay. I'll take a motion to continue to the 5th of October. Okay. Move by Eggleston, second by Tally. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. Item 8C, zoning amendment, 16-313, amendment to Title 17 of the San Clemente Municipal Code to regulate the personnel, medical, and commercial use of marijuana. Mr. Petches.
Thank you, Chair Brown. As you, most of you would remember, on January 16th, 2016, the city adopted an ordinance banning marijuana dispensaries, the cultivation of marijuana labs, and delivery services within the city. During the most recent election cycle, there's a proposition on the ballot, Proposition 64, and if that proposition passes, it would legalize possession, transport, purchase, use, and transfer of recreational marijuana, which will affect our existing ordinance. This is an issue for a number of cities, and our attorneys, BBK, have drafted an ordinance in order to situate the city to maintain some of the requirements that we currently have on the books. The new law still allows, to get news, it still allows local control, so a lot of the prohibitions that we have now will be allowed to be continued through this new amendment to the ordinance. But there's still certain aspects to the law that the city cannot control, which regulate the, or don't regulate, the private residential indoor cultivation and storage of plants. Individual can have up to six plants growing within their premises. If the city wishes to, though, we can have additional, additional criteria. We have two options. One is that we can do an indoor cultivation permit to have some form of regulation over these indoor facilities where we're cultivating plants up to six. Or we can just choose to basically leave it alone and let it exist under the, the new law should have passed. There is some urgency in moving on this because we need to complete the ordinance prior to the election. So the current schedule is to complete this tonight, and then it would go to the city council at the next council meeting on the 20th. That would give us time to have the second reading prior to the passing, the potential passing of the legislation. The way the ordinance is crafted, if the legislation doesn't pass, then it doesn't take effect. So staff's recommending, in terms of your options between regulating with a cultivation permit or not, we're recommending to include the op, we're calling Option 1, which is a regulation including the cultivation permit. So with that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
And the resolution on attachment one basically includes Option 1. Is that correct? Just for the record, PC.
But the way, we just need your direction to recommend to the city council?
With option.
With Option 1.
Are there any questions? Let's see. Mr. Eggleston.
I looked through the definitions here, and I could not find a definition for what does outside mean. For example, if you have a residence and you have a patio or a deck, are they permitted to grow marijuana on the deck or the patio?
Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners, under the AUMA, that would be outdoor cultivation and not permitted. So the only cultivation allowed would be indoors, which would be in the structure of a home or an accessory structure within the four walls with a roof where it cannot be seen from the outside. So essentially, it's negatively defined in the ordinance, meaning that it can only be grown inside, so therefore outside is everything but inside, which is within, within the home.
Is that in, is that in the initiative that's going forward that may or may not pass in November?
Yes, the AUMA or the ALMA as it's, as it's known by the attorneys, it's, yes, it's in there.
Which means that they cannot grow it on the deck or the patio?
They cannot grow it anywhere outside. That's, that's correct.
Has to be inside the premises.
Has, has to be inside. Now, the ordinance before you also has a ban of any, any, any growth outside, and that, that, that ban is in distinction from the permission to grow the six or fewer plants inside. But outside is defined in the AUMA. We could present to the council a definition of, of outside that parallels a definition in the AUMA as well. You could make that part of your recommendation to council.
Okay. We can't make that in opposition to that, though. Is that correct?
No, it would need to parallel what's in the AUMA.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Wu.
This is certainly a proactive approach, especially considering the high likelihood that AUMA would have passed. But my question would be, what if we just wait until the resolution get a pass, and then we start amending our rule? What's the downside of doing that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, it's a good question, one that's been asked by many jurisdictions. The downside is that there would be a window between passage of the AUMA, which, which goes into effect immediately, and the time in which the, the city could regulate indoor cultivation with the permit, if that's the direction the commission and council chose to take. As far as dispensaries go, if, if the, the commission and council choose to ban dispensaries, those will not be operational until 2018. So there's, there's, there's still a year and a half before that happens, which really just regulating indoor cultivation, and you'd have maybe a two to three month window between passage of AUMA and the possibility of regulating indoor cultivation.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tally.
Yes, I'm relatively new to some of these processes here, and I was just curious, what is the timeframe that I know the, the city will be able to, you know, impose its own reasonable health and safety standards, which are, I guess, are established by the staff, at least as I read this text? What's, what's the process for that, and is that something that the council will have to adopt? I assume that won't come back before us, correct?
Correct. We would actually be working with BBK on development of the permit standards. It would be similar to when we were developing the operational permit for short-term lodging units. So we'll create the criteria. We have certain obligations per the law that we have to stay within in terms of what we can regulate. It has to be reasonable, and so we'll follow those. BBK has already outlined a number of options and how to, to do that, and basically have a cheat sheet of things that we can follow. And so we'll develop that standard and get that approved through, it's going to be administratively done, but I'm sure there'll be follow-up with the, the city council members to make sure that we meet all the requirements and basically capturing the essence of the, the direction they've given us.
I think to meet the timeframe here, I think the way you've crafted it is that those, the permits will not be issued until you guys get all your criteria in line.
The timeframe's going to have to be, we're going to have to have the permit process completed prior to the actual ability to apply for the permit.
Right.
So that's going to be our timeframe. So we'll work with BBK.
But that's why it's important that we get a decent regulation input, and that, those are, those are in the briefing, so that the permits can't be issued until you guys are ready to go. I think we're under time compression here due to the state law windows. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. And, and just, just one further note on that. The, the draft document for this ministerial permit, it's, it's drafted. I actually spent a few minutes reviewing it this afternoon, and you are dealing with basic health, health and safety standards in terms of the types of, of, of gases that can be utilized, ventilation, lighting standards, those types of thing. And then in terms of the application, you're looking at background checks, age, et cetera. This has been patterned after similar permit processes that have been approved in other jurisdictions that have already gone, gone forward with this process. So this is not, we aren't blazing the trail here. There are a number of jurisdictions that have already, already, already taken this action.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, that, that answer's not good enough for me. Does Dana Point have a permit process?
I, I don't know.
Laguna Beach have a process?
I don't believe they do at this point.
So there's some out there, but we don't know exactly who or why?
No, I, I know many of the cities that have them. I, I know Ontario has a permit process, and Fontana does, Big Bear Lake does, Eliso Viejo does. I'm pretty certain based on conversations I've had with the city attorneys of Laguna Beach and Dana Point that they don't at this point. I know Lake Forest, my city, doesn't at this point. So if you're looking at probably a, you know, there are, there are many cities that have gone forward. There are many that are taking a wait-and-see approach. So, and that is, that's within the jurisdiction or the discretion of the commission and the council. They can, they can wait and see, or they can go forward. There's no requirement to go forward. It's simply a way to get ahead of the law.
But this is kind of a council go-do. Is that right? Mr. Petches?
Well, I'm still here. The, the wait-and-see is not exactly what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the permit.
Mm-hmm.
The, the permit, of course, wouldn't be required if it doesn't pass, but assuming it passes, I'm, I'm questioning how many communities have already gone through this process and decided that they need a permit.
I'm, I'm aware of probably seven to 10, and that's just based relationships that I have with the city attorneys there. I haven't, I haven't done a survey, but there are a good handful in Southern California that I'm aware of that have this permit process in place.
And there's communities that aren't doing that as well.
There are communities that haven't taken action with, with regard to the AUMA. When they take action, they may or may not have a permit process.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Tally, I think your lights ain't operative, and then I'll go to you.
Just to follow up on the permit process, it sounds like those are valid health and safety concerns. They're, they're not an undue burden than it's being imposed by the permit process. It's, it's.
That's, that's correct. We would be very careful to draft that permit process in a way that does not impose an undue burden. It's very clear in the AUMA that a city has regulatory authority when it comes to the indoor cultivation. However, we cannot take that regulatory authority and, and, and put in place a de facto ban. Right? And so we would be very careful with that. This is, this, this approach, as far as procedure, is fairly standard where the commission and council adopt a zoning ordinance and then leave, leave the ministerial permit process in the hands of staff. It's a fairly thorough process, but yes, the criteria would be in line with the AUMA and would not overstep the city's bounds.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Eggleston.
The ability to grow inside is for only residential. It's not for commercial. Commercial is banned. Is that, commercial buildings are banned?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's specifically laid out in here that commercials, buildings are banned.
That's, that's correct.
This is for only residential.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
How about multi-use dwellings? Let's say Apartment C wants to grow this stuff, but the landlord says no. What's the, where, how do we, and so Apartment C just walks into Community Development and says, here I am. How do I, how do we make sure this is all correct?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. When, when that was posed, I believe, by Commissioner Crandall earlier. I, I haven't researched that issue specifically, but my assumption is that, that, that when you're dealing with a leasehold interest, you're dealing with private property interest. We don't, we don't, of course, have, have responsibility or jurisdiction over that. But my assumption would be that a lease could deal with those, with those types of issues. We, we could not bar that individual who, who owns apartment or rents Apartment C or Apartment A or Apartment B from, from growing their, their six plants. And we could not withhold a permit, but if the landlord pursuant to their lease provisions bans that type of activity in the unit, then they could potentially ban that. But it, it wouldn't be something that we would, we'd be involved in.
Okay. Now, this permit, it goes to the individual, and when that lease is terminated, whatever, then?
This would not run with the land. That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Blackwell, you have a question.
So we have the six plants. Are we going to have a, a way to control the size of those six plants?
Well, I'll, I will, I'll first admit that I, I don't know how big marijuana plants can grow or how small they are. I'm, I'm ignorant as to those issues, but no, there's no way to control, under the AUMA, the size of the plants. If somebody wants to put some marijuana grow in there, then I guess they have that right.
The ceiling height, right?
The ceiling height, yeah, I guess.
Well, couldn't that be stifling to the rule itself? I mean, if you have six plants, but they grow into large trees, suddenly, I mean, there's intent there to control the amount, right?
Sure.
But there's no definition on size.
And, and there, there isn't that definition in, in the AUMA. I don't know if marijuana plants can grow into trees. Again, I'm neither a botanist nor a pothead.
Good thing.
So, so I, I just, I don't know. But, but it does not address the size of the plants.
Okay. But could we?
No.
Could, we couldn't add that provision?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think, yeah, tonight, just for, to re-base line, the required findings are on page three or four. Before the proposed ordinance may be adopted, the following findings must be made. The proposal, proposed amendments is consistent with the general plan, and the proposed amendment will not adversely affect public health, safety, and welfare. Those are the findings that we have to make, that, that we're required to make tonight.
First off, you should vote in your public discussion.
I know that. Okay. My, we're going to do that. We're in discussion here. Open the public comment period here. Anybody wish to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment and continue. I think questioning staff.
Got a question here.
Questioning staff. Okay. Mr. Smith.
I can see that the, there was a ban on all the MU zones, and mixed use, there can be residences. It could be private, like in a condo. We've seen that. And I don't know why that would be banned if that's a private residence. So we might want to look at that MU zone and don't omit it altogether, because I don't think that's what the law's all about with the private residence. Jim?
Sorry?
Said there's private residences involved in MU zones.
Well, whether that would be a residence or a.
Well, you, you didn't, you didn't let it happen here. You X'd them out. I'm, I'm just saying that in certain mixed use, where you could own a unit, that doesn't mean that you should be deprived of the ability to, to grow marijuana.
Are you, which table are you looking at?
Well, I'm looking at this section seven where.
It's on page, page seven.
The various zones that are outlawed, so to speak.
That just is for delivery, dispensary, manufacturing, and testing, right?
That's, yeah, if I can chime in there real quick. It's actually a good question. So, so these, these tables show the outright bans, and under the AUMA and the MMRS, which, which preceded the AUMA, that, that was the medical marijuana law, the city is allowed to ban certain aspects of marijuana. So general cultivation, this is not, not the six plants or fewer in a, a, a home, dispensaries, delivery, laboratory. So these tables show those bans as opposed to the permission to grow the six or fewer.
You can't grow in an MU.
That's exactly correct. Yeah. But this is just showing that we're.
Put that in here. Wouldn't that be applicable?
It's over here. Well, it's over on page five, residential low, medium, very low, medium, high. It's the same ban as there.
Commercial related uses, so they're not allowed in residential already. So back when we wrote the original ordinance, we were specifically identifying these types of marijuana-related business uses and banning them. And it wasn't included in residential because it's not allowed in residential.
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Eggleston.
I have another question. We're not in discussion yet, are we?
We are now in discussion.
Okay. I have a question. How's this going to be enforced? If we permit, if we go and permit, how's it going to be enforced? The Sheriff Department going to knock on your door and come on in?
Well, it's going to be probably, I mean, if, for instance, if someone were to grow six versus seven plants, I mean, it would be difficult. It would be complaint-based if there was an issue, and we would go out and investigate through code enforcement. At least with the permitting process, we have more information on the individuals and where the location of the site is than if it's not permitted. And there's no inventory at all of where the, where the permitted sites are, and then it could just, it'd just be in the individual's home. So there's some more control, I think, with the permit than without. Is it going to be hard to enforce? A lot of the regulations are difficult to enforce with code enforcement.
And I, I think it should be noted, Commissioner Eggleston, that because this is an interior use, even, even if a complaint comes in, the only way that code enforcement could get access to a home is through a warrant. So what this does really is it creates a map for staff to understand. I mean, there are no doubt homes right now in San Clemente where there are marijuana plants growing, and we're not aware of that. So this is just one way for the city to track who's out there.
Okay, well, since we're in discussion, I'm going to chime in on this. Giving this some thought, we should not be making rules and regulations which cannot be enforced. A person's home is their castle, as far as I'm concerned, and the permitting process inside someone's dwelling like this, I think, is Orwellian. I think it is unnecessary, and I'm not going to be supportive of a permitting process in someone's home. So I'm very definite about something like that. I think that's outrageous to have a permitting process for someone to grow some plants inside your house if, in fact, this initiative passes. And so I just don't think it's the right of the city to enter someone's home to count the number of plants that you're growing, whether those could be decorative plants or marijuana plants.
Commissioner Crandall.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand, really what we're trying to accomplish is protecting our ability to control this. If people have plants showing in their front window and everybody can see it from the public right away, this gives us the right to knock on their door and say, "Change it."
With a warrant.
I didn't say you could enter. I was saying you could knock on the door and you'd have a right, and they could lose their right to do it. But I think really we're just protecting our right to control this. If we find we don't need to control it, we can certainly rescind that part of this ordinance, but I don't think with what we know at this point, we want to go bare bones and not control it and get people doing things that can be grandfathered in if we do choose to, short-term, try and backstep and try to control it. So I think we've got to take the conservative approach, and I'm in favor of option one. I can make those findings, and I think it's the safe way to go, and it can be turned around much easier than not going option one and trying to turn it around later.
Commissioner Smith.
Well, I disagree with that. I think that we've got the cart in front of the horse here. We're trying to put a permit process in place where we don't even know if we need one, let alone can we enforce it. But more than that, I think it's an invasion of privacy, and we're also voting on a permit process that we don't even know what it's about. So there's no way I can support that. I'm going to have to go with option two.
Mr. Towey, did you like the work?
I did, I did. So I'm listening to the commentary here on the invasion of privacy, which I think is a well-founded statement, and I'm thinking about some of the health and safety issues that could exist here, and I'm wondering about how we're already doing that in many respects. So if I want to change something in my house, I have to receive a permit from the city in order to do that, and my home is not my castle in that respect. I submit to the jurisdiction of the city to make sure that I build something in at least in a manner that experts have determined presents the best probability for my safety. And perhaps there is a very valid concern with somebody having, you know, six plants that morph into pseudo-trees in a residence that doesn't have a sprinkler system or doesn't have, you know, necessary egress or ingress in the case of a fire or some other type of activity that could occur that could present a safety hazard to somebody that's not making a knowing decision to reside in that, such as a small child. That has nothing to do with, you know, the home being the castle. That has to do with our job as legislators here to try to give people the best option for safety, and if it presents that it's not a problem down the road, to your point, the ordinance can be changed. If there is such an ordinance, it's adopted by the council. We're not adopting an ordinance here, we're merely making some findings.
Making a recommendation.
And a recommendation, and it appears to me that while it's, it is a stretch for many people to, and we're not discussing the public health hazards or benefits, whichever side you fall on of marijuana, we're talking about, you know, somebody being able to farm inside a house. Maybe we should adopt a cautious approach to that.
I'm going to weigh in here with my, I guess, the lights are on, but I'm in agreement with Mr. Towey and Crandall that we have a safety issue, we do have a right to some regulation, we have permitting authority in the city. I built my house to make sure it's safety due code. I understand some commissioners' concern about the manhopes of castle. We're plying some really new ground here, we're passing a state amendment law, still makes it all illegal. Error. To be in support of option one, because I can make the findings with the key area on public health and safety, is where I'm coming from. Commissioner Wu.
I will be supportive to option one, and the reason is, I'm not 100% sure that a permit is needed, but I think some sort of control from the government is needed. The extent of it could be as light as a registration, it can go up to certification or license a permit. At what point we want to control that is debatable, but I think at the minimum, we should know where they go and how many plants are in our city, in these families, do they have young children in their families, what is the long-term health effect to these people? And they all need, we need those data to study those public health issues. So at this moment, without knowing the details of a permit application, I would support option one.
Okay. Mr. Blackwell.
Yeah, so listening to all the commissioners, a couple of commissioners have made comments that hit me equally. Invading somebody's home, okay? Looking at this from an Orwellian perspective, George Orwell may roll over in his grave if we do adopt these sorts of rules, but at the same time, we do need some control should there be abuse of the rules. And I think option one gives us that mechanism to do it. I think that there will be those that do abuse the rule, and there will be others affected by that, negatively impacted. This gives us a mechanism to address the problem, and I would be in support of option one as it stands now, and yes, we can go back in the future and revisit this and adjust accordingly.
Thank you, sir.
I just have one follow-up.
Mr. Eggleston.
Taking a conservative approach, less government is the best. Government should not be inside your home except for building and safety issues. If someone wishes to grow something for health and safety, that's their prerogative, it's not the government's prerogative, and it's really government overreached to the nth degree when someone can tell you what you can or cannot grow inside your own home. And so I'm going to be in favor of option two.
Okay. No more discussion? We have more questions of staff, more discussion?
No. Jim, we have to make a separate finding on CEQA? How do we, we don't have a resolution or anything to do that? Do we need a straw vote, or what do we need to do?
No, just, and the part of the recommendation, first you make the determination, the categorical exemption, then you adopt the resolution.
So I move, we make the determination that this resolution meets the CEQA guidelines.
You want a motion on that, or we require a motion on that?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, we can do one of two ways. You can do two motions. The resolution also includes CEQA language, so if that reso is adopted by the commission, then that automatically also approves the CEQA finding.
Okay, just keep it simple.
Okay. So we have the resolution and we have the ordinance. So I move, we adopt the resolution, 1602-5, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, recommending that the city council approves zoning amendment 16313, amending Title 17 of the San Clemente Municipal Code to regulate the personal, medical, and commercial use of marijuana.
With option one.
With option one. And I guess we do that separately from the attachment to, correct?
I don't think, I think we just need the resolution. Or we just need a resolution.
Just the resolution.
Okay, with option one, I have a motion.
Well, the resolution includes both options, so you just, if you specify option one in your motion, then that should...
Okay, he's done. We have a motion here for option...
Question. If we don't like option one, but we like option two, by not voting for option one, that means that we might be voting against the city allowing the growing, which is not the intent here. So I'm concerned about how this will play out.
Huh? How do you, what's...
Well, option two says it's okay to grow it. There's a, and I'm just saying, I'm just saying if we don't support option one, I don't want that to be that I don't support the option of growing in your house.
Just to clarify, you're not against...
Yeah.
You're against regulation or the registration process, but...
Yeah, but I'm not against the, I'm not against the law being changed, which is the bigger point, quite honestly.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, one suggestion is just to note in the minutes that specific issue that, for example, Michael was not opposed to the general ordinance being recommended but was simply opposed to option two as a component of that ordinance being recommended.
Option one.
Option one, thank you, Commissioner Towey.
Okay.
And the same for me also.
Okay, so we...
That can be noted in the minutes.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion for the resolution with option one. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Opposed.
Okay, it passes. Five-two, with two opposed, and for the record, Commissioners Eggleston and Smith, noted for the record about that they're not opposed to option two, is that correct?
We support option two.
We support option two.
We support option two.
Option two, for the record.
For the record.
Okay.
We support option two for the record, we're in favor of, you know, the other...
We just said that, okay. Is that clear enough?
Right.
So the motion passes five-two, and the two that were against are supportive of option two. And with that, moving on to item nine, new business, there is none, old business, there is none, reports of commissioners and staff. Any reports from commissioners, lighting or coastal or anything? Okay. Anything on the tentative future agenda there, Mr. Petches, we need to discuss?
No. No report.
Okay, no report. With that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move to adjourn two, the October, the September...
September 21st.
September 21st, 2000.
On the council for 12...
At 3:00 PM.
At 3:00 PM. If the council changes.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes seven-zero.
3:00 PM, what's up?